Commissioners are present, except Commissioner Warner, who is absent by pre-arrangement. Do we have a determination of legal notice?
Yes, all things were noticed.
Okay, the Planning Commission welcomes participation in commission meetings. This item is limited to matters that are under the jurisdiction of the commission, that are not on the posted agenda, and items which have not already been considered by the commission. No action will be taken, but we would like to hear from anyone who has any such matter to bring. Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent calendar, of which there is none. Oh, yeah, we are, the director is absent. Do you want to make any, I'm sorry about that.
No problem, thank you, Julia Acker.
I was thinking we were doing that under matters staff.
No problem, so just two items. The first item is just a reminder that the Sonoma State University Planning Commissioners Training is coming up, and the deadline is fast approaching, so.
Mary Lynn and I would also like to go.
So, yes, so we're interested in knowing definitively who plans to attend, so you could certainly send whoever would like to attend. We'll get you connected with Danielle Fitz in our office to make sure that that gets properly processed, and that we get your fees paid, and get you guys set up for the training. So if you could actually send an email possibly to Victoria then, and that way we could go ahead and get you scheduled. Then, in addition, we're also interested in just wondering if the planning commissioners will be able to hold a meeting on December 21st. We're not sure if you all have thought about your holiday schedules, and whether or not you would be available for a meeting on December 21st.
Will you be?
I believe we will be.
I would be. I know Commissioner Warner is planning to be away.
Okay. Any others planning to be away at that time?
I am also.
Okay.
So we can only lose one more?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, 21st?
The 21st, correct.
I take it back from the bill.
Okay, wonderful. So it appears that then you, we would have a quorum for that, so wonderful. So that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
No, thank you. All right, since we have no consent calendar, we will move to item 6A, case U 2017-0010.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Before you, I have a vacation home rental. But before I begin, I have a memo to the commission. When I made my staff report, I had forgot to include use permit findings, so I have prepared those in those you have in a memo. Additionally, the use permit findings have been added to the resolution as well. Moving forward with the staff report. So this is a vacation home rental located about a mile and a half northwest of Philo, the kind of where the stores are. It's located on Whipple Ridge Road. It's a 44-acre parcel, a little larger than 44 acres, and it's an Ag 40. The request again is to use the existing single-family residence as a vacation home rental. The parcel is somewhat, it's in the hills, but not all the way up in hills, kind of midway, and is partially forested, partially rangeland, kind of grazing grasslands as well. It has onsite well and onsite septic, and its access, like I said, is off of Whipple Ridge Road, which takes its access off of Highway 128. With regards to general plan and zoning consistency, it complies with both our, the Ag general plan zone, as well as the Ag zoning district. Again, it's not in the staff report, but it was included in the memo is that the use permit findings have been met. There were considerations about nuisance, but there have been conditions that will hopefully reduce the nuisances caused by a vacation home rental in a residential setting. And the project is categorically exempt under SEQA, under the Class 1 exemption. And a planner is recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? If not, we'd be happy to hear from the proponent.
Thanks.
So this is something that we.
Could you state your name for the record?
Sure, of course, I've never done this, sorry. Harris Kushner, and this is my husband Alex Kushner. And we've owned the property up in Philo. It's been our second family home, kind of our home away from home, for the last 15 years. And about a year and a half ago, we decided to put it up occasionally for rental on Airbnb. When we weren't using the property ourselves, our kids are now in high school, and we don't get to go quite as much as we'd like to because of all the different activities and things that they're doing. So we decided it was kind of a shame to let the property just sit there a lot of the time, and we were going to go ahead and rent it out. So that was about a year and a half ago, and then we then decided, so then we decided to rent it, and we realized that there's things that we have to do to actually legally rent the property. And as we began to find out, I've been working with people in the tax office, and we just, we started paying all the taxes that we needed to pay, and then we realized we needed a permit, so those things slowly unfolded. And once I found that out, we started working with Vandy and going through all the processes, and contacting Cal Fire, and we've got the Cal Fire approval and all that. So all that stuff's been taken care of, I think, to the, to the knowledge of what I, what I know of and what I've heard from you. And so that's kind of what we're requesting, is to just be able to rent it on a part-time basis, the family structure, to Airbnb renters.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I will note for the record that Commissioner Purnell arrived well after. Okay, so anything more from commissioners on this topic? Well, I was going to open the public hearing and find out if anyone from the public would care to speak to this topic. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and now we can have a motion.
I move the recommended motion. By resolution, adopt the category of exemption and grant use permit U 2017-0010 for the project based on the approved project description and findings, and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A.
And including the use permit.
And including the.
Use permit.
Use permit.
Yeah, under discussion, I'm not sure, is this appropriate for the right-to-farm ordinance?
Sorry. Sorry, what's the question?
I'm sorry, would this be a case where it'd be appropriate to include the right-to-farm ordinance?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either. I mean, it's not like a subdivision.
Right.
But it does, you know, it does include neighbors, yeah.
Certainly, it is agricultural zoning, and, you know, it's not expanding any of the structures or any of the use existing, so I'm not sure that it would be applicable for this particular case. But certainly, I'm not sure if County Council has an opinion on that either.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski, I'd have to look to check that code section, but nothing right now is being changed from what's already existing. If there's the agricultural issues, you know, the existence of Ag around this property, is there now, they're not adding anything to it that's going to cause more of an issue. I think actually, I would assume marketing it because it's surrounded by agriculture. So any complaints by the use, it's already well-established around it. But I can look, if you want me to take a look at the statute and get back to you while we do a different item, we can do that as well.
Okay, that's fine by me.
So, does that mean that we need to table this until you look?
Yes, I would need a few minutes to do that. So if we want to move to a different item, we can start a different item.
Did you say a recess?
Either a recess, or I can try and do it while we're talking on a different item.
Oh, okay. Well, do you want to do that?
I moved to table temporarily.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll move on to item two and then come back to this one. Sorry, folks. All right, the second item is case MS 2007-0023, continued from October 19th, the Penoleville trustees.
Yes, and Mary Lynn Hunt was not able to be here today, so Julia Acker for the item. And this is, we're actually going to be requesting a continuance to the next agenda for this item. I know it has been previously continued as well, and so we are requesting again a continuance.
Do we, we need to do a motion for that, right?
Yes, yes.
Before we go into the motion, I just had a little bit of a clarification question, maybe in the report for next time, under the applicant's statement, so maybe not. But anyway, what I'm curious about, it says, obviously, the Penoleville Nation would be required to waive sovereign immunity. Can you explain that, or what that means, or should we take that up at the next meeting?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski, I think we're still working on whether that's going, that's a reasonable portion of this solution or not. So Indian tribes have sovereign immunity, they are independent sovereigns over their territory here. The goal, if I'm correct, is this to be subdivided and then eventually put into trust capacity. If, depending on how this goes forward, the issue would be whether to maintain some level of control, to go forth and make sure where there's still code enforcement that will clean up, that will happen in response to the code enforcement complaint. One mechanism might be to say, the tribe has to waive its immunity for that purpose. I think we're still working on what the actual solution might be, and that's the reason for the continuance. So whatever does come forward in January could be different from what we're seeing right now. And you'll have a different, different staff report for that.
So this won't come back until January, then?
I believe that was the request of the applicant, was to, for the third Thursday in January.
Thank you.
So then that would have to be the motion.
So I'd move to continue this item until January 3rd?
Third Thursday. The third Thursday, excuse me.
Well, a second?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this item is tabled. Are we moving on, or are we? Okay.
We're moving on. Julia, could I just ask a question, so we can probably discard this, is that correct? It'll come out in some.
I believe a new staff report will likely come out with some clarifications on it. It'll be redistributed, though, to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to case U 2017-002, Long Valley Health Center, Inc.
All right.
Vandy, you're up again.
Thank you. So this is a use permit for a skate park. It is located in Leightonville, about half a mile south, east, or southwest of the town center of Leightonville. The project is going to be a phased skate park. The first phase will entail the construction of the bowls and the ramps, as well as the fencing around the skate park. And a additional phase will include more bowls and ramps, as well as the installation of restrooms for the property. Oh, and I apologize, the first phase will also include parking for the site. Let's go to the site. The site is on the south side of Harwood Road, and is, for the most part, relatively flat and bare. The southern portion has a lining of trees, which helps to separate the parcel from agricultural land to the south. It's in the Long Valley Fire District, and is connected to water on a separate parcel, which environmental health was okay with during, there was a pre-application conference prior to the use permit submittal, and environmental health was okay with a separate parcel being utilized for septic and water. With regards to the general plan and zoning district consistency, it's within a rural community general plan designation, and it is in conformity with such a use. Additionally, the zoning district is an R1 zoning district, and it is in conformity with the zoning district. There is a local policy for Leightonville that seeks to add additional recreational purposes around the community, including a skate park, as it's actually mentioned in the general plan. The use permit findings were met, there's consistency with those findings. And for the environmental termination, an initial study was completed, and it was determined that the project would be a negative declaration, and the staff recommends approval with conditions.
Yes.
So I see, by the conditions of approval, the two paragraphs under agriculture, again, is this the same as the right-to-farm ordinance? Or should be?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski. So I see the number four, in terms of, be aware that it's next to Ag property. I don't know that that's necessarily the right-to-farm provision. That's, in terms of the agricultural code, we apply that when, at a building permit, and something to be, or disclosure upon the seller. So that's where I'm seeing so far, in terms of the precise right-to-farm ordinance. I'm still trying to make sure that's the only place that exists in the code. So this is something different than just what we, than what we'd be required to do under the Ag code, which is, if you're applying for a building permit, if a residence is near agricultural property, there's disclosures that are required. That's one thing. This is different than that. This looks like it's just a, people need to be aware that they're next to agricultural property. And it's also applied for residential development. So in this context, there's something new being created on this property for the skate park. On the other item we're talking about, the development already exists.
So would it apply here, because this is actually development? And the public's going to be there and.
Kids especially.
Which people may complain about.
I don't know that it's inappropriate just to have, you know, that people need to be aware that, yes, there may be dust resulting from the farm property nearby, especially in that it's a park where people will be using it and exercising. Right? I mean, if you're at a skate park, you'll have.
Yeah.
Some amount of actual exertion, so if you're doing that right, when the people, people next door are doing whatever they're doing for that property, that could create additional odors.
Conflict of interest, basically.
Well, conflict in terms of the uses, but that being said, this is just saying that next door, you have Williams Snack property, and they're going to be doing agriculture on that.
So you think this is sufficient to protect the neighboring agriculture? Or should we mention the Right to Farm Act specifically as an item?
So so far, where I'm at, looking at the first item.
Do you want to study some more?
I'm, all I'm seeing so far are things about development, and it's more, it's less for, it's the users, and this covers users, and that people need to be aware. Beyond that, you're talking about disclosures to future buyers of the property. Given the use of the property for a public facility, that isn't necessarily as relevant, because you're not thinking about people living there who are coming to a nuisance. This is a public recreational facility, so I'm not sure that applies.
Well, my understanding is the Right to Farm Act is there to protect pre-existing agricultural uses. And if the public's next to it, and people start complaining about, you know, agricultural activities going on, I'd like to see them have some protection.
So certainly, with building permits are required for this, there's a, there's a statement that our code requires to be signed at that point in time. There's a disclosure in the building permit that that's happening, and we have this disclosure, or acknowledgement here, as part of the conditions of approval. Beyond that.
So you think this might be equal to what I'm proposing?
I think so. I don't think there's anything, I'd have to see what else would be in addition to this that would be required. I'm not, but where I know you'd have something to be recorded against the property. And the use permit does run with the property, so this acknowledges, this awareness and acknowledgement is something that we'll continue with that use permit.
All right, thank you.
I had another question for staff. Vandy, maybe you know about this. In the comments submitted by Sonoma State University, they incorrectly mentioned that the proposed project area is located in the Ukiah Valley, which puts it in an area with possibly unrecorded archaeological sites. This is, of course, not in the Russian River watershed. But perhaps based on that, they've made some recommendations about how to address archaeological issues. And so I didn't know if because of that error, there was going to be extra eyes on, on potential ARC sites there.
Right, that was actually a mistake by me. I received two letters the same day, that, from the same, I guess, employee of Sonoma State. And this, this letter was from a different project, but the only difference for this permits letter is that instead of Ukiah Valley, it says Long Valley, instead of Russian River, it's Ten Mile Creek.
Okay.
But all the other verbiage is the same.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, Julia Acker for the record. Just going through the resolution, it was incorrectly noted that there's mitigation measures included. Since this is a negative declaration, there actually is not any sort of mitigation measures included with that, so we are also recommending striking the section on Exhibit A that would state conditions of approval and mitigation measures, and remove the "and mitigation measures" section, as well as remove the double asterisks that are applied to the various conditions. And this will make sure that it's in conformance with the negative declaration that's recommended for adoption.
Could you, could you point out where that is?
Oh, sure, yes, so if you go to Exhibit A of the resolution. Yes, Exhibit A of the resolution, and I'm sorry, there is not a page number on here for me to give you. But then you'll see where it says, "conditions of approval and mitigation measures," as indicated by a double asterisk. We are going to recommend striking the part that says "and mitigation measures," so it'll just read "conditions of approval." And then you'll see in the various conditions that the ones that are designated as mitigation measures have a double asterisk after the number. We will be removing those double asterisks, because this is not a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, Julia.
And if I could just make a general comment about this project, is now an appropriate time?
Sure.
Okay. This is a project that's been really a long time coming. Certainly, it's been coming for as long as I've lived in the third district, which has been 15 years now, and there has just been really a tremendous amount of community support to bring this.
And there has just been really a tremendous amount of community support to bring this forth. I know that it's noted in here that there were a lot of comment letters submitted in support of the project. As Vandy pointed out, not only is it specifically listed in the general plan for Leightonville, but also in Leightonville's town plan, which is the Leightonville Traffic Calming and Revitalization Plan. There's quite a bit of time and graphics dedicated to figuring out where to site and how to bring about a skate park. So, it's a happy day for Leightonville that this has finally progressed to the point of being ready to have this use permit heard. And certainly, finding the location has been one of the biggest hurdles. So, just from the perspective of the community, I just want it to be understood how broad the support is, and certainly financially as well. There's just been, you know, many, many, many thousands of dollars contributed toward bringing this project to fruition. So, it's always exciting to see a project that is this well-supported by the community, and I did just want to note that for you all.
Any other comments?
Deputy County Counsel, just to quickly go over the right to farm ordinance as it stands in our code. So, first, the main thing the right to farm ordinance does is it's more of a nuisance, or an absence of nuisance declaration, saying as long as the ag operation has been there for three years, it is not a nuisance. So, that's the first, and there's a policy statement about that. Secondarily, there are disclosures that are required. And two of those three disclosures in the code are specific to things that would be incumbent upon the property owner. There's a required disclosure by the seller of the property, as well as disclosures in certain documents upon transfer. The issue of the disclosure in building permits technically only applies for buildings designed for residential occupancy. So, and on this project, none of those things are really happening. And at least the acknowledgement here in condition of four is getting to the point regarding there's agricultural property nearby, and it's making them aware of that. The rest of the protections of what is and is not a nuisance is covered by the code itself.
Thanks.
Any other commissioners have comments or questions on this project? Is there a representative of the applicant here, would you like to speak?
Good morning. Roland Spence, President, Long Valley Skaters Association. I'm nervous. Take a second, sorry. Building a skate park has been a dream in the Leightonville community for a long time. Back in 2000, a small group of high school students, with help from their supportive algebra teacher, banded together in an effort to raise awareness and the funding needed to build a skate park. The students held fundraisers, raised awareness about their mission, and even spoke at a county board of supervisors meeting with help from their algebra teacher, where the Supes agreed that it was a good idea, and basically told the students, "Sounds great. Get to work." One of those students is standing before you today. For over 16 years, we supporters and volunteers have poured our blood, sweat, and tears into a project we knew would become a monumental undertaking and an amazing achievement for our little town. Aside from raising nearly $100,000 from numerous local fundraising efforts, the major hurdle of realizing our dream has always been securing a location for the facility. As I'm sure you're aware, Leightonville's size, topography, and unincorporated status limits the number of suitable parcels available for such a project. For years, we searched and searched for an acceptable site for our dream park. There were a few promising spots, but we quickly realized that with our limited budget, purchasing land would set us back tremendously. So, knowing the good-hearted nature of many folks in our community, we solicited donations for a small parcel. After many unsuccessful attempts of asking for a piece of land to be donated, it seemed like we would have to bite the bullet and use all of our funds to merely make a down payment on a piece of land. It wasn't until the skate park project was rolled under Leightonville's Harwood Memorial Park nonprofit umbrella that the parcel at 351 Harwood Road started to look even better due to several encouraging factors. The owner of the parcel, Long Valley Health Center, agreed to lease the property for a whopping $1 per year, with the express purpose of building a skate park. The parcel in question is located just a stone's throw from Harwood Park and Leightonville Healthy Start Family Resource Center, where employees can easily monitor the facility. Surrounding parcels are practically vacant, or have a large buffer of open space, greatly reducing the risk of impact on neighboring residents. The site is located in a part of Leightonville far enough from downtown to avoid pedestrian safety concerns. Children coming from the schools will not have to cross Highway 101 to access the park. The parcel is relatively flat, which is best for our construction purposes. The property is highly visible from the road, where parents and the public can view the activities at the park to help us keep an eye on things. And finally, the parcel is situated in a corner of town that has always been the center for community recreation, near Harwood Park, the Garden Club, Healthy Start, and the rodeo grounds. It just makes sense to locate the skate park in this area. This is an exciting moment for the future of Leightonville, like Allison was saying, for the well-being of the kids, and to add a great future to our often underserved community. The good people of Leightonville have been incredibly supportive and so very patient during this process. And now, after nearly 17 years of hard work and fundraising, folks are very eager to see this project come to life. As that nervous high schooler who stood before the board of supervisors all those years ago, I share their eagerness for the culmination of our efforts. And coupled with the hope and determination instilled within me through years of perseverance, I simply cannot wait to hear the sounds of laughter and skateboarding in our beautiful park. Oh, man, I'm breaking up. A vote to approve a major use permit for this project would not just allow us to use the parcel in question for the facility. It would send a message to the people that we know where our priorities lay, with the future of the community, and the health and the prosperity of our youth. On behalf of Long Valley Skaters Association and the kids in Leightonville, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
No reason to be nervous. You did a great job.
Well, you know, I get so emotional about this. Thank you. Passionate.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, I will open the public hearing if there are any members of the public who care to address this question. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for any last discussion. I had one question for Allison. I'm sure you probably know. There is a Leightonville MAC, right? And I wondered if they supported it? I imagine they do, but.
They, they did. And I believe there were letters of support that came through the MAC as well.
Yes.
Yeah, when I was, when I was still on the MAC, because I served on the Leightonville MAC, and then when I was appointed to the planning commission, I had to resign from the MAC due to conflict of interest. Apparently, you can't be on the board that advises another board, which makes sense. But yeah, there is, there is, I really cannot overstate how broad the support is, including the Leightonville MAC, the business community, of course, the youth in the community. And then 15 years' worth of planning documents also that just support, support finding a home for the skate park in Leightonville. It's been a long, it's been a long time coming, and I think that's some of the emotion that we heard there is that it's just been many, many, many years of just putting one foot in front of the other to make something really big and really great happen in the community.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think we might be ready for a motion.
Okay. Walk me through it, because this will be my first motion.
If I may, just, Julia Acker for the record. I just want to note that the recommendation in the staff report just needs to be ever so slightly revised to reflect that it is not a mitigated negative declaration as well. So, I would recommend that it reads, "By resolution, adopt a negative declaration and grant use permit for the project as proposed by the applicant, based on the facts and findings contained, and subject to the conditions of approval."
Great, Julian, can you share with me where that is?
Yes, if you go to page four of the staff report, it's where the signature line is.
Great, okay. Okay, so.
Oh, oh, excuse me, and also acknowledging the deletion of the asterisks to the conditions of approval on the resolution.
So. Allison, the thing you have to remember is to take these out of the Exhibit A and all those asterisks.
Okay, great. So, I'm starting with reading the recommendation on page four. Okay. So, I move that the planning commission adopt a mitigated negative declaration and grant the use permit for the project as proposed by the applicant, based on the facts and findings, and subject to the conditions of approval with the changes that have been indicated, which is to strike from Exhibit A the mitigation members' measures, and to modify those asterisks as appropriate.
Two minor additions to that. Also, you can, Exhibit A to be modified just to remove references to mitigation measures. And then also in the wording of the motion itself, that we are not, by resolution, adopting a mitigated negative declaration. We're adopting, by resolution, a negative declaration.
Just the neg-deck, okay.
I'll second it.
We'll roll call this one.
Nelson?
Yes.
Purnell?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Ogul?
Yes.
Holt Camp?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And are we ready to go back to 6A?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski. I think so, and I can just reiterate what I've mentioned before about the county's right to farm ordinance. So, for the purposes of the vacation home rental, there's no new development being proposed. It's an existing residence. So, even at that level, they are still subject to the overarching, there is no agricultural nuisance language of that code section, or of the code chapter. And only if there is a new development being proposed would they be subject to the building permit requirement.
Thank you.
So, with that, I believe we're ready for a motion.
Motion is the same. By resolution, adopt the categorical exemption and grant use permit, U. 2017-0010 for a project based on the approved project description and findings, and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A.
Second.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski with two minor additions to what we're talking about.
No problem.
Just to make sure this is the resolution as submitted by staff at the meeting that adds the use permit finding language to the resolution. And then secondarily, in the, in paragraph three for the nuisance findings, just some minor word clarification. It reads, "The proposed project was determined to have some nuisances with regards to noise. However, the conditions of approval have been indented to address such concerns." I would like to revise that language to be, "However, conditions of approval eight through 14 address such concerns."
Eight through 14.
So, those are the modifications to the motion.
Is this something I'm supposed to say now, or can I say what he said?
We'll make sure, if you're okay with that, we can say the motion as amended by those two clarifications.
I'll still second it. This is, by the way, everybody, U. 2017-0010, just so we're all clear, we're going back to Kushner.
Ogul?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Purnell?
Yes.
Holt Camp?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, and I will be familiarizing myself with the Right to Farm Act ordinance.
That's only going to get hotter in this county, so probably a good idea. Want to do the last one, or you want a break?
We'll keep going.
It should be a short one. If it's a long one, then we should need a break.
It should be very short.
Okay. We'll go with it. We'll let everybody shift around for just a second. You're welcome. This is case R. 2017-003.
Hi, thank you. So, Julia Acker, staff planner for this item. So, the request that you have in front of you today is to rezone a privately-owned parcel from public facilities to forestland. This will make the parcel consistent with the general plan designation for the site, which is presently forestland. There, the site is located about 16 miles north of Leightonville and two miles southeast of Spy Rock Road. And I hope I don't butcher the name of the road. It's Fitzhugh Road. And the site is 160 acres in size, so it does meet the minimum parcel size requirements for the forestland district as well.
I believe it's Fitzhugh Road.
Thank you. So, in terms of general plan and zoning consistency, changing this to, from public facilities to forestland really will be keeping with the intent of the general plan, as well as the zoning district for it. The forestland designation is certainly applicable to this site as it's really intended for parcels that would be retained for the growing harvesting and production of timber. And this site, other parcels that are under the same ownership are actually designated forestland, which are directly adjacent to this parcel as well. So, this will be sort of continuous, continuing the forestland area within this portion of the county. So, with regards to an environmental determination, this project is found categorically exempt from SEQA. This is primarily because there was an environmental document prepared at the time of adoption of the general plan. And since this is changing the designation to be in conformance with the general plan, there is no need for additional study pursuant to SEQA. So, with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of this item to the board of supervisors. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
How did it get in public facilities in the first place, if you know?
You know, I'm really not sure. It may have been that it was intended at that time for some sort of facility, but something, and perhaps after, you know, maybe a public agency owned it at that time and was transferred, and perhaps the agent might be able to shed some light on that as well, too.
So, with that, we will hear from the applicant.
Good morning. Jim Ronco, agent for Wayne Bynum, the owner. This parcel of land had always been in the federal government. And in 1985, as part of the exchange with Valley Medical, where multiple, multiple pieces of public land were transferred into private ownership in exchange for the lands of Valley Medical, this parcel came across. So, since 1985, it's been in private ownership. But unfortunately, without a specific request to transfer it from public facility to forestland, and paying the fee, which we know it's all about, is paying the fee, it's been sitting here in, is a public facility. So, we're just trying to get this thing to be consistent. I don't know where we were in 2007 when we did the general plan and rezone update. We could have got this done for free. But we're here now just trying to get this straightened around. Have any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, do you know the cost to do that?
Let's see, how much did we pay?
I can tell you the cost of the rezone application was $3,310 for the rezone.
Yeah. So, and that's the old fee.
Correct.
The new fee is even worse. So, yeah.
And I'm sorry, I forgot, I did read this, but is the fish and wildlife fee also?
It is not, because there is no sort of negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration for this.
Are there any further questions or comments on this item?
Okay.
Oh, wait, we do have to open the public hearing. Public hearing's open, public hearing's closed.
There's so many people out there.
That's why I forget. There are people there. I never forget if there's actually people to talk.
Okay, I'd like to move that the planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors approve the rezone.
Second.
Do we need to mention the rezone?
We should mention the resolution. So, that's add to the recommendation, approve the rezone, and approves the resolution.
And approves the resolution, okay. And approves the resolution, okay.
There's a planning commission resolution prepared to be adopted to do the work of the recommendation.
Okay, so...
The resolution's the part at the end.
Yes. Great, so I will restate that then. Planning commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the rezone as well as the resolution, R.2017-0003.
Second. Okay.
Sure.
All right. Ogil?
Yes.
Purnell?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Holt Camp?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay. Next item is matters from staff. Have we covered those, or do you have anything else you would like to bring up?
I have nothing more, thank you.
In matters from commission, so it seems like we are having both meetings in December is the tentative thing. If anybody has any problem with that, you should probably pipe up early. And we will all who wish to attend the Sonoma State event on the 2nd will email Victoria, and she will get us hooked up. We have to go in at least cars, two cars, we know there are three people going, so for Brown Act, we have to go in at least two cars.
I'm not going to be attending. I'd like to, but can't pull it off this year.
So are there just three of us now?
Yeah.
Okay. The three of us can go together.
Correct.
No, my understanding is two of us can go together, and one needs to go in a separate car.
Deputy County Counsel, Matthew Godrowski. I know the issue would be if a quorum of the commission was one car, that would be four. So if three, I believe, that may be possible. I think I'll communicate more with Victoria after the meeting about any other concerns.
Okay. I believe we are up to...
I have a couple of items under matters from commission. At one time, many months ago, many years ago, there was a planning commission, a map was issued with the different districts within the county and who the commissioners were on that, and I don't remember, I don't have it with me, if it had addresses and phone numbers and that sort of thing. I wonder if that could be updated? I'm not even sure Roger's on it, and he tells me he's been here most four years, so...
I thought I actually did...
What's the document?
The district map.
It's already updated, and on the website.
Oh, okay.
Yes. The district map with all of your terms and who's in which district.
I think it was the contact list that we wanted to also get updated.
Oh, for the...
I'm not sure what contact.
Well, I mean, you had mentioned phone numbers and email addresses.
I thought that was on the map, but I'm not positive. No, okay.
Not on the county website, I hope.
Okay. On the district map, all that's there is your term.
Okay.
The commissioner appointed to each district, and the map showing where the district boundary lines are.
Okay.
Your contact information is Victoria Davis at the planning building office.
Okay.
Works for me. Happy to pass it on, though.
Okay, thank you. And the only other thing, I know I'm kind of jumping the gun on this, but I did want to let the commission know, I will be out of the country from February 10th until probably around April 8th. So I'll probably miss about three meetings. More or less, because of how many meetings we have.
I hope you're going to do something fun.
Australia, New Zealand.
Ooh. Okay, any other matters from other commissioners? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Thank you.
All opposed, duck.